27th, 2015, meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Again, what I'll do is ask all persons attending, if you need to come up and provide testimony, or you'd like to provide testimony when called for, that you come up and state your name and address electronically for the record, and also sign in at the sheet that's at the table. And of course, our meetings are on MCM, both Verizon or Frontier, and Comcast for broadcast. And now they're also being broadcast live-streamed through KLYC. So we asked that if you have a cellphone, that you take a minute and silence your cellphone, and you refrain from texting or taking calls in the meeting. And if you do need to take a call or do any texting, that you go out in the lobby. So, that being said, we'll go ahead and I'll ask Councilor Hill to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Scott, I'd like to just take an opportunity to welcome our, I guess, our fill-in city attorney, Walt Gell, who's filling in from our retired city attorney. We have hired a new city attorney. We don't expect him to be on-site till sometime after the first of the year, so Walt Gell will be filling in, so I'll be maybe asking him a little bit for some guidance along the way, as normal. So, we'll go ahead and get started. This is a time on our agenda that we set aside for anybody that would like to talk to the council on anything that may not be on our agenda tonight. If it is on our agenda tonight, we ask you to wait to that time. There'll be a proper time during that agenda item for you to come speak to the council. There are some things that we cannot allow testimony to be taken during this section. And one, besides being already on the agenda, if the city is currently in a matter of litigation, because of that, we cannot take any testimony on that. If it's a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, we cannot take testimony in that. We had asked that you wait till that public hearing at that time. And, of course, I'll limit, depending on the size of crowd, if there's a lot of comments during this period, I may limit the time that we allow for comments. So that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? One more time, would anybody like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We do have the minutes of August 25th, 2015 dinner and regular meetings, and I understand, Rose, that there is a change of the minutes reflected. Mike Bissett is being at the meeting, and he was not at the meeting?
He was not at the meeting, and the minutes have been corrected.
Okay, the minutes have been corrected. That being said, with that correction, I'll entertain a motion, if there's no questions, that we accept the minutes of August 25th, 2015 dinner and regular meetings?
I still move.
Moved by Councilor Manke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Yoder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the minutes of the August 25th, 2015 dinner and regular meetings have been approved. That takes us into a public hearing night. We do have one public hearing on our agenda tonight. That's a public hearing regarding banning the processing and sales of medical marijuana, and growing, processing, wholesaling, and sales of commercial marijuana. And at this time, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing regarding those subjects. And so I will now consider the public hearing open. And what I'll do is I'll ask our city manager, Martha Meeker, to give us a staff report. So Martha?
Thank you, Mayor. As I think most of the folks know, this last July, the state of Oregon passed several different pieces of legislation modifying how marijuana is going to be treated in the state. One of these was House Bill 3400, and that allowed municipalities to ban any or all of the following six marijuana categories: medical marijuana processing, dispensaries, commercial grow, commercial processing, commercial marijuana wholesaling, and commercial marijuana resales, or retailers. Now, while this particular public hearing won't delve into the tax issue, as we're going to talk about whether or not we want to add a local tax later on in December, I just want to remind everybody that the subject of banning does affect ultimately the tax issue, or the idea of a local tax. As should we ban any one or all of the categories, then a city loses the option to put on the local tax, and it will not receive funds from the state in the taxes that they will put on any marijuana industry. So with that, let me turn it back over to you. And anything that, Walt, would you have anything to add from an attorney's perspective?
I would just add that Section 134 of House Bill 3400 allowed the cities to choose to put, to a vote of the people in this part of the state, any one of those six categories that Martha just read out. To do that, it requires the council to adopt an ordinance. And if it does do that, it must provide the text of that ordinance and that ballot title to the OLCC and/or the Oregon Health Authority, depending on which of the six items the council wishes to refer to the voters for prohibition. If the council does refer a measure to the voters, it would go on the November 2016 ballot. And the process in the meantime would be that, as to the categories which the voters will be voting on, any applications that would be filed with the Oregon Health Authority or the OLCC would be stayed pending the outcome of that vote. So it would have the effect of staying the establishment of new establishments within the city under, that would otherwise be authorized. So, one other, and just last comment I would make, is that in the event that a measure is referred to the ballot by the council, and if that, if that measure were to include medical marijuana dispensaries, then any medical marijuana dispensary that had, would not be subject to such a prohibition to the extent that it was registered before the date that the city council adopted the action to place that matter on the ballot, and that that medical marijuana facility had complied with all city land use procedures, and was in compliance with city land use requirements for any such facility. So with that, I would hand it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gell. At this time, since this public hearing is general in nature, and not a land use public hearing, we will be not, we will not be going through the actual supporters and proponents and opponents. So now what I'd like to do is open it up for testimony from anybody in the audience who would like to speak to us on this issue. And although we would like to hear from everybody, in the interest of time, we ask that you take as long as you need, but please try not to repeat something that somebody else has already said. So everybody who might want a chance to speak to us, has their time to do so. So what I'll do now is for anybody that'd like to speak to us, I'd like you to raise your hand, and I'll call on you by one. Okay, Dr. Helly, would you come up here? And again, we will have you state your name for the record and your address, and sign in.
I'm Thomas Helly. I live at 900 Southeast Baker Street in McMinnville. I'm also president of Linfield College, and I'm here both as a citizen and as the college president. As I understand it, Oregon law creates a 1,000-foot buffer zone for K through 12 schools, and the city council previously adopted restricted zones for medicinal marijuana facilities in areas where children frequently congregate. For example, any preschool, the city pool, public library, and the community center. We are aware of rumors about a marijuana facility that will operate less than 150 feet from a principal entrance to Linfield's campus. Many of our academic and administrative buildings are within 1,000 feet of that property. Some of them, including student residences, campus ministry, classrooms, and admissions, are less than 500 feet away. Linfield is obviously an undergraduate residential college, subject to federal law. In compliance with the Drug-Free Schools Act, therefore, marijuana is banned on our campus. But also, for decades, Linfield has been the site of a pre-kindergarten nursery school. Our nursery school currently enrolls 74 children aged between 3 and 5. The program is accredited, and it's registered with the Oregon Department of Education. Each year, approximately 500 public school students, including all of McMinnville's 4th graders, attend Linfield Music Clinics and the Annual Concert for Kids. We also typically host day-long events, and even sometimes overnight events for the entire 4th grade of the Reynolds School District, as a part of their "I Have a Dream" program. Each year, approximately 4,500 students, ages 12 to 17, attend our summer conferences and events, including our residential Olympic soccer camps for middle school and high school athletes, which run for approximately one month, as well as multi-day residential camps for high school and middle school athletes in football, softball, basketball, and volleyball. The Craig Singletary High School Forensics Tournament brings roughly 400 high school students to campus each year. The college regularly enrolls McMinnville High School students in our standard college credit courses on campus. We always have such students taking courses at Linfield. And as a part of our partnership with the McMinnville community, the college library regularly hosts McMinnville School District students. By a conservative estimate, 3,000 additional high school students come to campus each year on admissions-related visits, including 350 on competitive exam day alone. The admissions building is approximately one block from the rumored dispensary. Thus, it is clear that we have thousands of children on the Linfield campus. Some of them enrolled explicitly in educational accredited programs. Many there for prolonged periods of time. And I respectfully ask that the council restrict all marijuana business categories to sites more than 1,000 feet from Linfield's campus. Thank you.
Hold on for a minute, Doctor. Any questions for Dr. Helly? Larry, Kelly, Kevin? About down at this end? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Okay, who else? Again, if I can get you to come over and sign in and state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Micah Cooksey, and I live at 2709 Northeast McDonald Lane, here in McMinnville.
Mike, how do you spell your last name, please?
C-O-O-K-S-E-Y.
Thank you.
So I wanted to just read over a few studies regarding marijuana usage, particularly among those who are between elementary school age and the age of 25, just to have a few objective statistics for your review. In 2008, Ferguson and Bowden studied a group of adolescents from birth to age 25, and they found that the use of marijuana was linked to lower incomes. It was linked to a decreased likelihood of earning a college degree, linked to a higher rate of unemployment. In 2014, Homel Adal found that of the people studied, they grouped them into three groups: abstainers, occasional usage, and frequent usage. And those that were inside of the group labeled "frequent users" had the lowest grades of the three groups. Frequent users were least likely to enroll in post-secondary institutions. And then, although those in the occasional usage group did not have any difference in post-secondary education enrollment than abstainers, they found that they delayed enrollment in post-secondary education longer, and were more likely to drop out than those in the abstainers group. Then in 2014 also, Silins Adal found that those who began using marijuana daily before age 17 were less likely to finish high school, less likely to earn a degree, substantially increased odds of later cannabis, marijuana dependence, and other drugs. And this group of daily marijuana users before age 17 also had increased odds of attempted suicide. And then just a few other statistics from various studies. Postal workers who used marijuana in a particular study were 55% more likely to have accidents. In Australia, 4.3% of driver fatalities were due to marijuana. Additionally, I think it's worth pointing out that even though marijuana or cannabis is a plant that, as a Christian, I believe, God created, it's worth pointing out that since 1970, when cannabis plants were found to have about a 1% THC count, in 2008, when they collected the measurement of THC in particular cannabis plants, they found that instead of a 1% content, it had a 9.6% content. So those who are growing cannabis to be consumed by, you know, whatever method, are breeding that plant to contain more THC. So it's been altered from its original state. And then just another statistic regarding marijuana usage, as opposed to tobacco, cannabis contains 50 to 70%, depending on the study, more cancer-causing substances than tobacco. So these are just a few, you know, statistics that I collected from various studies. You know, there are a lot of arguments to be made for and against the usage of marijuana, but these things, I feel like, are things that anyone would agree are negative, and I would definitely speak in favor of the possible ban. Thank you.
Any questions for Michael? Kevin?
Did we get a copy of all those statistics from studies?
Absolutely, yes. I have one copy, but you can have it.
Okay, if you can give them to our city recorder over here, Rose, she'll make sure that they, those studies actually, the names of studies get in the minutes and everything.
Perfect.
Correctly. Okay, any, thank you for asking, Kevin. Any other questions? Remy?
Micah, thank you so much for coming and speaking to us today. Are you aware that the legislation that we're considering is only applicable to those that are 21 and over? So the majority of the people in your study, the numbers you're giving us aren't really applicable, because those people would still be obtaining marijuana illegally if they were to be using it?
I was not aware of that. I would still argue that the proposed ban would still limit access to those who are in the age category studied. And so, you know, in my opinion, anything that can be done to restrict access to, you know, school-aged children is a thing worthy of doing, but...
Certainly. Well, if any facilities were to sell marijuana to anybody under the age of 21, they would be severely punished and most likely shut down. The other thing is, you cited a statistic that 43% of accident fatalities in Australia are due to marijuana. Are you also aware that...
Yeah, let me correct that. I apologize, I must have misspoken. I meant to say that it was 4.3%. I'm sorry.
4.3%. Okay, do you know what the drunk-driving statistics are for Australia by any chance?
I'm sorry, I don't. I was just looking at various statistics, and the study did not mention that.
Are you aware that it's actually legal in Australia to drive with an open container of alcohol in your car?
I did not know that.
And that there are drive-through facilities in Australia where you can, the driver can drive through and receive alcohol?
I was not aware of that. I guess a follow-up question would just, out of curiosity, be to ask how that pertains to this proposed ban.
Well, the implication of the statistic that you're sharing is that a level of intoxication is creating, you originally said 43%, which would loan itself to the idea that the nearly half of the fatalities, auto fatalities, were due to some sort of intoxication. And currently, we have a legal intoxicant that is prohibited in its sale by age, it's prohibited in its location, and we also know that it's a contributing factor to auto accidents. And so the idea that you presented with 43% of auto fatalities being due to marijuana kind of threw a red flag in my direction, because it doesn't, it doesn't compute, right? Now, you said that you misspoke, that the number was actually 4.3%, which is different, but you're talking about an intoxicant. And so I think it's important to also talk about the other intoxicants that are out there. And I think that's important information about Australia. You brought up Australia, so I'm addressing Australia, because it's surprising, and most people coming from here don't think about that cultural difference. Certainly, when I lived in Australia, it was pretty surprising that people could drive up and purchase alcohol, and that people could drive with open containers in the car. So I thought you would want to know.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Scott, Allen, anything from you? Thank you, Michael.
Would it be possible to have one follow-up statement about what the council was saying?
Sure.
I appreciate the info. And one thing that I didn't mention earlier is that even in cases where, you know, someone had consumed a legal amount of marijuana in combination with a legal quantity of alcohol, you know, the effects were measured to be different than those who had not consumed either. And so, you know, it found that people who had consumed legal quantities of both substances were more likely to, in this particular study, weave between lanes, so somewhat relevant. But again, thank you.
No, there's no doubt that we're talking about an intoxicant, and there are real factors that will reverberate out into our communities. And I think it's important to discuss them. I just think it's also important to discuss them in straightforward ways. And I hear your point of view, and you brought us some wonderful statistics, but you also presented them saying that these were unbiased, but they're not, because you only looked for statistics on one side.
Granted, okay, thank you.
Why don't we, why don't we move on? Thanks for your questions, Remy. Why don't, why don't we move on? Who else would like to speak to the council during this public hearing? Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak to the council? Come on forward, and again, state your name for, and address for the record, and then sign, sign in for the hard copy, please.
Thank you. I'm Marvin Horton, and I live at 3599 Northeast Spring Meadow Drive, here in McMinnville. So my, my concern about having businesses here in town is that most businesses that I'm aware of have some form of advertising, and so I would assume that if they're allowed to have businesses here in town, they would also advertise. And, and that's where I have a problem with the advertising, because it promotes a behavior. We see advertising all the time promoting alcohol, cigarettes, you know, different things that, in a way that's attractive to people. And we have advertising for the casino. A lot of the people that get drawn into that are really not people that should be spending their money that way, or using, or abusing drugs that way. And so for, for me to drive around town, going to different places that we would go to with my family, and seeing billboard signs promoting the use of marijuana, I'm really opposed to that. I think, I think for people coming to our town, seeing that, it's, I don't think it'd be a very good advertisement either. We have a, you know, a very popular town. People move here from other states. We have some really great things going, and, and I'd like to see that continue, but I don't think this would help McMinnville's image. And lastly, just appreciate the work. A number of you have been on the board for some time, and, and we've got a great city here, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
If you get any questions from Marvin, let's start with you, Allen.
No questions, thank you.
Remy? Scott?
I might have one for Walt. Under, under our restrictions of time, place, and manner, advertising isn't a part of that, is it?
Well, there has been discussion as to what limitations can be put on signage, and to that, to that limited extent, I think time, place, and manner restrictions may ultimately have signage implications, if not, if only because of your existence, of your existing signage.
Sign ordinance.
Is that done, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, let's start with you, Kevin.
Hello?
Kelly?
[inaudible]
Okay, Larry? Okay, thank you, Marvin.
Thank you.
You know, I'd just like, the one thing, you know, as we go through this, and we have other people come speak to us, I want to remind the council and those speaking that our public hearing tonight, this is really a subject that has a lot of deep meaning to people, and how the city progresses on this subject. I do want to just try to remind people that our purpose for this public hearing is regarding the banning, the processing, sales of medical marijuana, and the growing processing, wholesaling, and sales of commercial marijuana. So that being said, I would like to, as you come forward, I'd like to have you, ask you to try to keep your comments regarding the, the purpose of the public hearing tonight, since this is such an emotional issue, and that'll help us get through and be able to vet out some of those really important things from some of those things that really aren't part of the public hearing. So, that being said, who else would like to come speak to the council tonight? Anybody else would like to speak to the council tonight? Come on forward, and again, sign in, and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for the opportunity here. For the record, my name is Anthony Taylor. I reside at 1510 Southwest Friendly Court. What a great opportunity we have before us as a community to allow the progression of an industry that, as some people have said, is a new dot-com. I'm not quite sure it's that much, you know, valuable, but it is a valuable source of revenue for the community if we let this continue to grow and to develop, and to work with one another to develop rules and regulations that will facilitate these, these new businesses. I know we already have some of these businesses in our city, and even up the road in Dundee. And I know these people are providing full-time jobs, living wage jobs, for the people that are working there. And they're providing a valuable asset, or a valuable access for patients, of course, first and foremost. And now, with the advent of the early sales, also for the general public, allowing them to come purchase product that they're legally allowed to have now, contaminant-free, tested, evaluated, and dispensed by knowledgeable individuals that are really, it really sometimes amazes me how much they actually know. And even somebody like myself that's been around this, this particular product, and involved in reform of the laws for it for nearly 40 years now, how much they know about strains, and what a certain strain with a certain CBD will do for your rheumatoid arthritis, or what it'll do for your spasms, or your seizures, and your anxieties, and your sleeplessness, and the list just goes on and on. But again, these businesses and the opportunity that we're presented with as a city and a community, I think are just phenomenal and really exciting as we watch this, this economy develop. And I know that, that within this particular community and county, if the city adopts an ordinance, it has an ordinance, it has to go to the vote of the people for a do-over because the city already passed ballot measure ninety-one saying, we're okay with this. We're okay with not only the legalization, but the growth of these businesses and the licensing and regulation of the businesses that come along with it. And if you take it even a step further, all the other businesses that help, like Kramer's at the end of town that sells more pots or more potting soil or Wilco that does the same sort of thing, all the other small ancillary businesses that deal with this, the accountants, the attorneys, the subcontractors, the electricians, all those people are part of the fabric of this business and this new, excuse me, this new industry that we're about to embark on. And I just really think it's really important and really exciting that we have this opportunity. And I would just ask the council to make sure that you carefully consider all the ramifications. I, I've seen some of the preliminary stuff with the outlining of the, the boundaries that are available, that are on the map and, and the area that's allowed and available for the development of this industry within the city. And I think it's reasonable what, you know, it will take for regulations and rules over this. I don't think it's nearly necessary to go as far as Portland did and lay a whole nother regulatory scheme over everything. I think what the state is doing and with your folks' input on local regulations and ordinance, I think we can really make a vibrant industry of this that's discreet and polite and hardworking and is going to add a lot of revenue to this community. And starting at the first of the year, you can take advantage of the three percent local tax. And I think that's a great thing. You know, eleven million dollars in the first week of sales, I think that number's a little over the top, but it is indicative of how Oregonians are going about, you know, what they're now legally allowed to do. And I was around several dispensaries in several different parts of the state in the first couple of days of the early sales. Everybody was calm and they were just waiting in line to do something they've been waiting to do for a long time and have been doing it illegally and now are happy to come to forward and do it legally and, and come out to their friends and say, yeah, I've been doing this for a long time. I'm so glad now that we can go do it legally and safely and we don't have to worry about the law enforcement looking over our shoulder or things like that. Although, you know, they have their certain concerns with driving and under the influence and things of that nature and, you know, security situations around the air, the premises of, of the, of the businesses that we, I hope you'll allow to take root. But again, with the good oversight of this council and the developing rules at the state level, I think we got an excellent opportunity and I would just encourage the council to grab a hold of this opportunity, excuse me, and move forward with, you know, with the care that it demands and, but with the vision that it also demands. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead. Larry, let's start with you. Any questions? Kelly? Kevin? Scott?
No.
Remy? Alan? Thank you very much, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay, is, who else would like to speak to the council during this public hearing? Come, come on up and come forward and sign in and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ronnie Cooksey. I also reside at two-seven-zero-nine Northeast McDonald here in town. Just two or three quick comments or encouragements for you. Thank you for your, your work here. I, I would encourage you to, to, to take the opportunity that you have. I'm a little bit behind on, on catching up on where this is at. I was a little bit surprised to understand that there was a chance to still do something about this matter. I, I assumed that, you know, when the, the vote statewide happened last year, that it was kind of a done deal. And I read last month or the last meeting after the, the meeting in the newspaper that, that no one came to, to speak in opposition and my heart sunk and thought, boy, a dereliction of civic duty and not realizing that. So I was, I was embarrassed for our state, just personally, when we, when, when, when the state passed, you know, by vote of the citizens to make this, to make marijuana legal, to, to reward what was being done illegally and to provide an opportunity for, for those who'd been doing this for, for years illegally to now do it legally. So it's exciting to me that our city has the legal opportunity to make a different decision. And so I encourage you to, to consider that. As far as the differences between alcohol and marijuana, and certainly, you know, alcohol is, is another topic that we're, we're not debating tonight or you're, you are all are not considering, obviously. But someone is able to consume some alcohol according to our, even our own legal driving laws, or they're able to consume different, you know, states, every state is different, but there is the ability to consume some alcohol without having someone's mind altered. Whereas I would propose that marijuana is a very fast-acting, mind-altering substance. And so I think they're, they're quite different. And so I think to encourage the use of marijuana here in our city by allowing for particularly recreational use, but even medical, medical use is, is to, is to encourage the use of it. Now, which causes more marijuana to be consumed for it to be sold legally, sold illegally? I can't answer that question. But certainly if the city council allows it to be sold legally in our city, it is at least seen as an endorsement or it's certainly not discouraging the use of marijuana, I would say. The last thing that I would say, I happen to know a lot of the young people here, here tonight, and, and most of the cases, I know that they asked their parents, they're with their parents, but it was the young people's idea to come. And so I would just encourage you to think about our young people. And, and these are faces of young people who are coming to say, please don't allow this into our city. And so I'd ask you to not think about tax revenue or any of those things, but to think about the young people of our city. So thank you.
If you think, any questions? Down this end, any questions? Here and now, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, would anybody else like to speak to the council? Let's start with Adam, you're up. Why don't you come on up and again, sign in and state your name and address for the record.
Adam Garvin, twenty-nine forty Northeast Lafayette Avenue, McMinnville. So a few things, you know, main thing is, this has already been voted on. It's already been accepted by our city, by our county. If you look at the voting statistics, it wasn't a one percent or two percent. It was, I think, six in our countywide and nine in our city. So you already have an overwhelming majority that's supported it. Look at the tax revenue. One dispensary in Bend sold fifty-five thousand dollars in marijuana in the first day. Eleven million dollars in the first week statewide. There's a hundred and eighty-one dispensaries in Norma County. So that tax revenue is going to be split after the end of next year based on the amount of dispensaries you have in your city. Further regulating the time, place, and manner, like around Lynnfield's campus, is only going to restrict the amount of commercial property we have to put up that type of business. If you look at Lynnfield's campus, the majority of their drug use is centered around the Greek environment or the HB apartments. I know that because I was a Lynnfield student in their accounting department. I was also a Lynnfield graduate of their preschool. Their preschool is located at the very far other end of campus off of Davis Street. So to be within a thousand feet of the proposed rumored dispensary is a far stretch, I would say, from actually impacting the youth that revolve around that campus. If it's a thousand feet from Soul Buell, it's a thousand feet from Lynnfield's preschool, in my opinion. And we already, with the preschool provision, we already conquered that. You guys have already put that provision in place. So I would definitely, you know, put on the record that I'm against you guys putting further restrictions on it. It's already very hard to find a location to do anything in this town. It's not just, A, is it okay with the city to put it there? You still have to find a landlord that's okay with it and is going to have the backbone to go against any feds that would come in and serve them with a letter to seize their operation. So most people that are putting up this type of business have to find the private financial backing to come in and buy their land and do their own private build-out, which is an a cheap endeavor. Then you look at it from an industry standpoint. Back in the eighties when E. Rath came to town and wanted to plant some grapes, what if we would have said, okay, you can drink wine in this town, but you can't process your wine in this town, you can't stomp your grapes in this town, you can't bottle your wine in this town? Would we have visit McMinnville today? Then you look at, okay, what's the ramifications for visit McMinnville? Are we going to be deterring visitation activity? I traveled to Napa Valley in the middle of August, driving down the corridor through Calistoga, through St. Helena into Napa. You'd be driving right down the highway next to a winery, next to high-end eateries. There's a dispensary there. There's a head shop there. It does absolutely nothing to deter visitation. If not, it helps promote it. Like I quoted a couple of months ago, the same people that drink wine and eat cheese also smoke weed. And then you look at the tax revenue side. So, you know, as early as July this year, our police chief went on record and said that technically we're understaffed. So you look at how that tax revenue is going to be split. Could he put another officer or two on the force and then you enact the three percent sales tax that you're allowed? What else could that do for the city? Could that, you know, get that barrier free park to have an extra structure or two? You know, have a three-person zip line instead of a two-person zip line? Those are all things that make this community better. And, you know, as far as advertising and towards kids and stuff like that, I doubt many people in this room have read the seventy-seven-page memorandum of the recuse rules that were voted on last week, but it specifically talks about advertisement in there. And basically you can put your name and your phone number and your address and that's about it. You can't put use, you can't put things geared towards kids. It's very highly regulated. So, you know, a lot of it, I think, as far as the fear of this coming into this town is just not educating yourself and having misinformation. You know, and about statistics being quoted, when we did medical marijuana here, February and January of two thousand fourteen, I came into that third public hearing and, you know, disputed a quote that our own ex-sheriff made that he quoted from a satire website with a quote from the Denver Post. So any statistics that you look into, make sure they're written by a credible source and not just by somebody that has got some reefer madness going on. Any questions?
Anybody got a question? Start, Alan, with you. Any questions for Adam?
Questions, thanks, Adam.
Remy? Scott?
Thank you.
What about down at this end? Any down at this end? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to be next? Anybody? Okay, I see the young gentleman sitting right there under the projector. Come on up and it's nice to see some of the younger generation here at our meeting. So go ahead and what we'll ask you to do is state your name and record, address for the record and sign in, please.
PJ Morrissey.
Can you pull the speaker down towards you a little bit? There you go.
PJ Morrissey. Eighty-five fifteen Southeast Three Trees Line, and that's Anamity. So I wrote a letter to the editor a while ago. On this? And decided to...
Yeah, pull it, pull the whole thing towards you a little bit so they can hear you back.
Okay, so I wrote a letter to the editor, decided to expand on it and make it into a sort of speech. All right, so marijuana destroys lives, families, and ultimately our community. Immature adults will buy marijuana for various reasons and become addicts. There will be a lot more DUIs, shootings, and general mischief if marijuana is available to anyone above eighteen or twenty-one. Marijuana is classified on the federal level as a Schedule One substance. The Controlled Substances, Substances Act states that no prescription may be written for Schedule One substances. The DEA defines it as a drug with no medical use and a high potential for abuse with potentially severe psychological or physical dependence. That was a quote. The DEA's position on recreational drug use is clearly stated in the DEA position on marijuana. It says, legalization of marijuana will come at the expense of our children and public safety. Drugs.com says this about marijuana. Side effects of marijuana use will be variable from person to person depending upon strength and amount of marijuana used and if the user is occasionally or chronically exposed to THC. The short-term effects of marijuana use include problems with memory and learning, distorted perception, sight, sounds, time, touch, difficulty in thinking and problem-solving, loss of coordination and motor skills, increased heart rate, anxiety, bloodshot eyes. Reaction time may be impaired while driving. Panic attacks, paranoia, and psychosis may occur acutely and be more common in psychiatric patrons, patients, sir. For chronic users, the impact on memory and learning can last for days or weeks after its acute effects wear off. Marijuana may be caught on the street with more dangerous substances that may lead to more serious side effects. End of quote. All this pertains to the fact that marijuana is dangerous and should be extremely limited. Thanks.
Listen, you gotta sit there and we'll see if we have any questions for you. Let's start down here again, Alan, with you.
No, but thank you for coming up and speaking to us in your speech. Thank you.
Remy or Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you, PJ.
How about down at this end? That's good. I think, thanks, I tell you, I wish we could get a lot more of your generation here to speak to us. Very good, thank you very much. Okay, next. One more chance. Anybody else would like to speak to us? Wayne, come on up and again, sign in and provide your name and address for the record.
My name is Wayne Stocks. I'm a resident of four-thirty-five Northeast Johnson, McMinnville. I've been listening to a lot of people talk about medical marijuana versus recreational marijuana, pros and cons, and people with statistics. I went online tonight to look at statistics and directly from the most recent report from the CDC, it states that forty-five point three percent of twelfth graders use cannabis at least once in two thousand twelve. So that would be in your high school, not, that's across the board. This is, this is a nationwide study. So given that, and that that's such a bad thing, it really is. But the focus of that is not that they're using, it's that somebody's giving it to them or selling it to them or allowing them to smoke it. It has no bearing on whether or not recreational adults should have the right to participate with a legal substance as deemed by measure ninety-one voted on by the people, the same people that elected you. There's, there's no reason to ban this in any form for adults. The good doctor, Healy, mentioned that there's some three thousand students going to Lynnfield College on and off during the summer or the winter or whatever. I could say the same thing to ninety-nine W. right out here. There's at least three thousand students a day going down that street. So does that mean we ban all marijuana in the city of McMinnville because three thousand students are driving down the street in McMinnville, possibly exposed to a building sitting there that won't even allow them in? So that argument really makes no sense to me whatsoever. The bottom line is there are stopgaps put in place already by the city, by the county, by the state, and there are more to come. If any of you, like Garvin had said, have read the seventy-seventy-eight pages, I believe it is, of the draft rules for how cannabis will be handled in the state of Oregon, it is daunting. I mean, just to open a shop is going to be a major undertaking. Let's move on to the fact that this is a new craft industry for the state of Oregon with millions of dollars at stake, not only for the people that are opening these shops or growing the marijuana, but also for the landowners within your city and your counties. They all have a stake in it too because people will pay exorbitant prices for that real estate to be able to put their dispensaries in those locations. Tax base goes up, employment goes up, and they are living wage jobs. They're high-paying jobs. They're not field worker-paid jobs. These are high-paying jobs. I'm not sure that many people understand that cannabis, at one time in the, in the United States, was legal. And it was prescribed... And it was prescribed by doctors to patients for many of the same maladies that people are faced with today. Prior to nineteen thirty-nine, when it was placed on this list and made a Schedule One drug. So, prior to nineteen thirty-one, or nineteen thirty-nine, it was prescribed by doctors in oil form, very much like some of the processing processes, that's where I'm going with this, that you're talking about banning within our city limits. Those same oils are used to treat Parkinson's, um, Tourette's, um, all kinds of maladies. Um, any kind of spasms, et cetera. All these items that you're talking about banning now are are currently available in the medical marijuana shops. You can buy infused cookies, you can buy oil, you can buy tincture, you can buy capsules, you can buy cookies, you can buy sodas, you can buy all those items in medical marijuana pro- facilities right now, today. I don't see where there's a huge stretch to allow that in a recreational sense also, in a recreational facility. I, I don't see the difference. Just a moment here, I'm gonna make my notes here. Um, oh, yeah, uh, I already spoke to that about the alcohol versus cannabis. Um, the sign deal that the one fellow brought up. I'd be more worried about the plastered alcohol and cigarette signs on the face of every store in McMinnville than I would be about somebody being able to put a cannabis sign up because it's been strictly prohibited by, or, yeah, well, it's gonna be prohibited by the draft ordinances that are being drawn up now. Um, in closing, I would like to, uh, to ask that the city of McMinnville would embrace this cottage industry just like it embraced the craft beer industry and the craft wine industry that came to McMinnville, as well as, uh, other, uh, small businesses that grew out of their garages and became larger employees here in the community, such as, like Betty Lou's, a craft, not a craft industry, very much on the same order. So, uh, that's really all I have to say, folks.
Hey, thanks, Wayne, hold on there. Uh, Kevin, let's start with you, anything? Kelly? Larry?
I would, I would like just to make a comment, uh, and help me out with this, Mayor, but this is a trivia, tr- something for you trivia buffs. I believe that, uh, in the ori- was it the original city charter of the city of McMinnville? That, uh, interestingly, marijuana was listed as illegal in the city of McMinnville. We had that, uh, presented to us here a couple of years ago. It's just a trivia thing.
That was, that was no longer in the city charter, but it was in the original, original city charter. And I think that goes, why I don't know, because the federal law allowed it until it was become a Class One drug, and so the city said, "Then we're gonna allow it," so... Anyway, Scott, anything from you?
No.
Remy?
Thank you very much.
Alan?
Oh, Wayne, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne.
You bet.
Okay, anybody else? Steve, come on forward. Again, you know that you've been up there long enough, you know what to do.
I know the rules. My name's Steve Rupp. I live at fourteen nine twenty-one Hidden Hills. And I had not intentionally intended to speak tonight, and you've asked me not to go over ground that other people have already gone over, so I'll try to be very brief. Uh, I'm in favor of all six modes of cannabis in this town. However, I thought Tom Helly's presentation was very well put. I a hundred percent support his request. And so, all I've gotta say is, I really ask you to pay attention to his request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't think, we probably wouldn't have any questions on that one. Stephen, but let's go, sure, anything down here?
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing not at this time, then, I will, um, close the public, public hearing, and I'd like to, uh, thank everybody, uh, for speaking to us tonight now. I think, councilors, we have a couple options. I think the first one, do we want to discuss this tonight? Or how do we want to direct, um, staff to proceed? So, I'll open it up around the table. Scott, let's stop, start by, uh, any comments you may have.
Um, as, as we spoke at our dinner meeting tonight, um, I, I, I think there's reason for time, place, and manner for us to have a workshop and further discussion so that we truly can gather more information, for the betterment of, of the community, how we want to approach. Uh, I know we've got some land use and zoning, uh, restrict, or, or issues that need to be resolved. Um, and so, I, I'm in favor of, um, putting on the agenda, a workshop that would deal with time, place, and manner, uh, at our, at our next council meeting.
And it would be, love, you, uh, like to limit the time, place, and manner, Scott? Or anything that's related to time, place, and manner? Okay, Remy?
Um, well, you know, I, um, am going to echo some of what was said tonight, um, by some people out here. I feel as though our voters have already addressed this, and I feel as though our job up here is to represent the voters. Um, and I understand that, uh, we may have personal moral or, um, valued judgments against the use of marijuana, uh, whether medically or recreationally. But we have some real facts. Which, uh, uh, one of which is that the voters have approved, uh, the use of recreational marijuana within our city limits. Um, we also know without any doubt that, um, we will, be gracefully, or not so gracefully, bowing out from our ability to receive, uh, what stands to be a fair amount of tax revenue. Um, I feel like those two pieces of information, um, in many ways supersede, uh, some of the other testimony that we've heard. Um, ballot Measure Ninety-One could not have been more well-advertised. The voters had an opportunity to come out and speak their minds. Um, I'm interested to see, uh, what we do as a city, uh, in terms of, um, zoning, and I would look to city staff for, for guidance on that. Um, I am not saying that I believe this is a simple matter by any means, because I don't believe it is. Um, but in terms of allowing or not allowing, uh, recreational marijuana use or, uh, the subsidiary business that goes with it, uh, I feel as though our voters have already decided that, and, um, and that, that is my, that's my thought on this matter.
Hey, thanks, Remy. Alan?
Well, I agree with Remy and I agree with Scott, uh, in that, uh, right now, I'm inclined to just go ahead and have no bans on any of these six issues that are before us. Um, and let, let our free enterprise system take care of everything. Uh, in light of the ballot measure that's been passed, and I think that, uh, the details can be worked out. But I do, uh, agree with Scott, and I, I'd like to see some intangibles discussed a little bit more. And, uh, especially the zoning, uh, some, uh, odor issues that might be, or might not be a, an issue. And, uh, I would like a little bit more time to, uh, bring all this to the table and see if there's any kind of, uh, twists on our part that would be necessary to discuss. But right now, I'm inclined to just move ahead with how everything's organized with the, with the six i- issues. And no ban.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Larry, let's, I'm gonna finish with the council president last, so let's go, let's go to you.
Uh, realizing that this is a complicated issue and, and with many, many, uh, variables, I think that, uh, we need, we need more time and more information. One of the things that concerns me is, uh, after the meeting last night and, and, and listened to our attorney talk, um, I realizing that it isn't just the rules and the, maybe the changes that are here or that might be coming, but the interpretation of those, and seems to be changing on a weekly basis as to, uh, what's gonna be allowed and what isn't gonna be allowed by the courts even. So, uh, I, I just feel like we don't have enough information yet to make a decision.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Kelly?
Well, I tend to agree with Alan and Remy. The voters did vote for this, and I feel we should reflect how they feel about it. Um, I feel, you know, obviously, the taxing portion of it, I think, um, well, I know the state tax will provide some revenue for our police department and the things like that, and the 3% tax might be very helpful for us. Uh, I too am very interested in time, place, and manner restrictions, so I would prefer to wait at least another two weeks to have more of that developed for us. And I'm, the zoning issues, insofar as we can put it together by that time, I'd like to know more about that. Uh, there's a couple of other issues I've brought up, but, uh, beyond that, generally, I favor this. Not banning.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Council President Jeffries, your turn.
Okay, um, you know, I've been opposed to this in the beginning, I was opposed to the medical marijuana usage, um, I've... And, and I've been, uh, you know, I've been accused of, of trying to push my, my morals on, on people with my opinions, but that's not the issue at hand. Um, you know, I, I personally don't use it, and it's, and, and there's, uh, religious reasons that have brought me up to, to feel that way, but that's not what I'm basing my decision on. Um, I, I'm looking at this as, as a legal perspective and as a, as how this adds to our society, and I just have a... I'm just amazed that we've, that we've taken so much time on this issue. I'm upset with the state for making this, have this conversation now. At a time when we're, when we're saying no to tobacco use, we're saying yes to this. It's just, we're trading one, one addiction for another. Uh, the argument about taxes, that this is, we're gonna be able to get revenue from this. I, we've seen this with tobacco. Uh, any, anytime the legislature introduces a bill to improve, uh, tobacco cessation, half of the, the, especially the, the Republican side of the, of the, of the chambers flip out that we're gonna be taking away, this is the only time they care about tax revenue, by the way, is when it has to do with tobacco. Um, and the, the, the cost of, of regulating and of treating people for addictions and for the health effects far outweigh any possible revenue from this. I think that is just a ridiculous, uh, argument to make, that we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna net a profit, uh, as far as from, from the taxes. I think these, the comments made about how this affects our productivity and affects, uh, uh, the, the outcomes of education and income, I think those are all valid and been well-tested for many years. And so, I, I, I just, and, and this is a hill that I'm willing to die on. I clearly, uh, was it forty or fifty-nine percent of McMinnville people said they, you know, they, they, they appreciate, they, they want this to happen. Um, I'm, I'm representing the other forty, forty-one percent of people who said no. And, uh, and I just think that, um, you know, we're, we're just really getting ahead of ourselves, and, you know, as I... You all know I sit on the council governments and I visit with city officials from all across the Mid-Valley Valley, and they're all looking at us and just shaking their heads, like, "Why are you taking the lead on this?" They've all said no to these things, and, um, and I'm just, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just shocked that we're, that we are continuing down this path when we have other options. Um, you know, I, this is against federal law, you know, it just, it just... It just doesn't make any sense to me that, that, that we're, that we're doing this. Um, and I, and I would, if we've decided to, and clearly, we're not going to, but if we decided to ban it, uh, I would, I would like to see a federal court overturn that ban. It's not gonna happen. And if, who knows what's gonna happen in 2016, you know, with the elections? I mean, this, all of this could be un- can, can be undone. And we're, we're spending so much time on this issue that can be, that can be, uh, undone so easily by, by a different presidential administration. And the last thing I want to say is, Measure Ninety-One had, it, had language in there that the reason behind this was to, was to free up the police and to allow them to, to, uh, to save money and for, 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 uh, enforcement and protection of properties and things like that. Basically, what they're getting at was that people were, were growing illegally on private property, and they were growing on Bureau of Land, and, and it was, it was, it's hard on law enforcement to, to, to kind of patrol those areas. But I would like to know, what would be easier to enforce, especially in McMinnville? A flat-out ban or this level of regulation and age and, 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 and level of intoxication? And, I mean, chief, what would be easier for you and your people? No, you can't have it, or how old are you? How much do you have, you know? Which would be easier?
Oh, but you can't ban personal use. You cannot ban it.
No, I'm saying, it's, whether that's on the table or not, I'm saying that's, that's federal law. Okay? So, that's all I gotta say.
Well, thanks, Kevin, it's, it's good to see, I know you're as passionate as you are about things, and I think that's what makes our council special. I know, as a, uh, ex-member of the, uh, Board of Directors of the Oregon Mayors Association and a newly-elected Board of Dir- Board Director of the League of Oregon Cities, I'd like to say our council is different than all the other city councils in the state of Oregon, but we're not. We're going through the same thing every other council, that I think it's about fifty percent of the councils that say, "Put it through," fifty percent of the councils, like the fifty-nine, forty-one percent vote that say, "Don't put it through." To me, we have a fairly simple, complicated solutions that we really don't understand. I'm a firm believer that OLCC doesn't understand them. Uh, I, like Kevin, am very upset with the legislature put this off to an organization or put it off specifically to the cities to determine what they were going to do. I think that was done purposely. Um, and especially when OLCC or the Oregon Health Authority was not prepared to deal with these situations. But I think that being said, I'll just give you a little bit of what my thinking is, is, is the the least, most important thing to me is the tax revenue. I, I believe you never make a decision that could be a wrong decision based on it's gonna get you more taxes. Aside, I don't have any problem if we got taxes or didn't get taxes. That is an issue. My, my second thing, though, is I think as we look at it, is Measure Ninety-One, I believe, being passed by the people, they have set a mandate to the people statewide, and unfortunately, it was a, unfortunately, it was a s- you know, it was a statewide election when, whether it be passed or, or repealed by, or passed or failed in a specific community, it really didn't make a lot of difference because it wasn't a community decision. It was a statewide decision. So, that being s- that being said, I am not personally for banning any of the six uses. Um, I think we have trouble when we ban one and not ban them all, if we ban two and don't ban four of them. So, I'm not for banning any of the six uses. That being said, my most important thing is the time, place, and manner. I think that's the one thing that the citizens, uh, the city council in McMinnville can do and should do is determine what is the appropriate time, place, and manner that these sales can take place. Is it gonna be set in stone forever? Absolutely not. Was the wine industry set in stone future in the eighties? Absolutely not. Was, we're just starting to learn now about the microbrewery industry, and some of the spent grains, although they're good, what some of the spent grains are doing to some, and the, the aftermath of some of the spent grains are doing to cities' wastewater treatment plants. I mean, we're starting to learn all these things, so... So that being said, I, you know, I guess I would probably entertain a motion. First of all, I'd like to take a straw ballot. I think we could do that, can't we, Mr. City Attorney? Just to get a consensus. Who's for banning? Is there anybody for banning altogether at the table? Kevin's for banning altogether at the table, okay, so I just wanted to get that on record.
Thanks, I wasn't clear.
Kevin, you are clear. I just wanted, I just wanted to get it to you. Well, I, I believe we need to allow staff time to actually bring to us, because I do believe there's more land use issues and zoning issues than we'll ever know of, and I don't believe since the OLCC report came out and the 88 pages of, of that draft language that, believe it or not, I did read every page, didn't understand it, but I read it, that we have to give staff more time to do that. So that being said, I'll leave it up to the council, since I'm only vote to break a tie, that I'll leave it up to the council to determine what action the council wants to go from here regarding the time, time, place, and manner, so. Anybody, anybody wanna make a motion? Oh, wait a minute, Alan, you have a question?
Go ahead.
Gonna make a motion or?
I am.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
I, I would just say that I'd like to, our next, our next meeting, the first meeting in November, make that a workshop that goes over time, place, and manner and an update from planning as it deals with zoning and, and just have a great work session and, and I would even say that us that have concerns about time, place, and manner, that we might put those out on the table and get that back to Martha so that she can bring further information. I mean, last night with Sean, we had, I mean, we really had some great insights, but it's a moving target in some of those. It's precedent-setting, it's not been tried out in court, what you can and what, you know, what you may have to deal with later. But there was enough that was brought up last night that I still need time to make some determination. I, like the Lenfield situation, I want to make sure that if they're special requests, that we might be able to address those special requests of those individuals that represent those special, those special requests.
Mr. Mayor, when is the OLCC rules, when are they finally adopted? Was that the draft rules or is that an emergency rule that they?
The final draft rules?
They are temporarily in effect right now. The permanent rules are supposed to go into effect, I believe, January.
So they did an emergency, did an emergency?
Correct, they adopted temporary rules. They are in effect right now.
And they do include time, place, and manner, correct?
They have, they have reams of time, place, and manner from the state, from the standpoint of state qualifications.
Okay.
And so one of the things city staff has to do is cull through those and find, enlist those for the council, what, what are the requirements coming from the state? What, what gaps are there in those that may not address some local concerns?
Okay, because there were a lot of, I mean, I also read the, whatever, 77 or 78 pages, but I recalled seeing a fair amount of
Oh, yes.
Time and place, especially.
Yeah, that, as it relates to the commercial recreational.
And I think we have to realize too, that a lot of those, since they are temper, final temporary until January 1st, that they're, the feedback they get, chances are that some of those will probably be changed in the
Yeah, I can tell you from my own knowledge, I mean, I do a lot of administrative rules for Department of Consumer and Business Services and depending on the issue, sometimes those temporary rules are followed, because it's a matter of timing. If they know that these things have to be put in place in order for the law to take place, they do these very rushed temporary rules, all the while they're continuing the administrative rule process in public hearings. So they put, put up enough so that they meet the requirement of those statutes, but they're gonna come back through and they're gonna clean it up once it goes through the second longer permanent rule hearing. So the reason why I'm saying this is that, you know, we made, we made a move to do early sales of medical marijuana and, and early sales of recreational marijuana in medical facilities. Those, those proposed rules, it's, it's, it's prohibited. So, I mean, we got ahead of, we got ahead of the statutes and the state rules, so I would recommend that we wait until those are finally adopted, final rules are adopted before we do anything else, because we're just gonna continue to get ahead of ourselves.
Let me, let me go through.
One quick thing, I'm timing.
Okay.
We can't wait because though the temporary rules are good all the way until June 28th, to get it on the ballot, we may need to make a decision before then.
Also, the city has to begin responding to land use compatibility or request forms in January and that, that, that may, the ability to adopt any local gap-filling measures that the council may wish to adopt, your timing of that may be something that you want to take on sooner than waiting for the final rules, which may, as Martha indicates, be delayed into the spring.
Okay, I want to drop back for a minute. Scott, you did make a, make a motion.
Motion and I'm still, and then I would, I'd like us to, to address, I would like to have us address, have a vote on the 24th of November, which gives us, gives us that, that work session.
A work session on the 10th and a vote on the 24th. Okay, so we do have, we do have officially, we do have a motion
I second it.
On the table, so we have a second on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that we will have a work group regarding this, a work session regarding this and time, place, and manner on the 10th of November and hopefully after that, we will be able to actually do a vote on the 24th of November. So does that give you enough? I know you and Doug and others have a lot of work to do, so, and our city attorney, of course, has a lot of work, a lot of work to do, so.
Alan has a handle. Mayor?
Oh, Alan.
Oh, no problem?
No.
It probably goes without saying that that'd be closed to the public on that work session.
The public hearing is closed.
I mean, our work session.
No, work session is open to the public.
Is that gonna be open to the public?
Yes, but not for, not for testimony, not for testimony.
Not for testimony, okay.
Strictly for deliberation and whatever we elect to do. The public, the public hearing is closed. Okay, anything else on that? I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I, I think you can see that, I'd really like to tell you, we are the only city dealing with this, but unfortunately, we're not. There's a lot of cities dealing with this. So there will be a work session on the 10th of November that you're all invited to. If you have any specific input that you would like to go on record as being proposed, can they submit, well, they can submit information for our consideration?
To staff.
To staff, it'd have to be submitted either, because the public hearing is over, so.
Go ahead, Senator.
So send it to Martha if you have anything you'd like to be considered. Anthony?
Mr. Mayor, Anthony Taylor, I would like to offer my assistance as a member of the OLCC Compliance Licensing Enforcement Subcommittee to be able to get any light on a question you might have involving the process and the temporary rules that they are threatening the Secretary of State for approval, so that I would
I know you have a lot of years in it and I'm sure Doug and our city manager will probably pick you up on that too.
The council would like to say for the record that if one of the legislators is calling the county, it was the OLCC that aided you.
That's true.
Can you effort to make sure that you both had local control, it ended up putting it into your eyes?
You're correct, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Okay, let's move on under our old business tonight. We do have a wastewater financial plan review. Mike, I'll turn it over and you can introduce Deb, because I think she's probably gonna do most of it anyway, isn't she?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would refer you to the staff memo that's in your packet as well as the rate equity report that Deb Galardi will be reviewing with you. And would note that this particular effort builds on a couple decades of work that the council has in place regarding wastewater rates and more specifically builds upon the financial plan that you adopted in 2011. We've reviewed that plan biannually as recommended by the city council, so you did a review in 2013 and we're back in front of you this evening to conduct another review. You have three sorts of tasks in front of you this evening. One, Deb will update you on the wastewater model and validate the standing plan that's in place to implement suggested rate increases. We'll also walk you through an equity review that looks at the balance between the base rate and the volume charges and also evaluates the rates across customer classes. And the third thing that we have in front of you this evening is a change in methodology on how we bill our monitored industrial customers. Currently is on an extra strength loading rate and we're proposing to change that to a class average hierarchy based on the strength of the customer class. And so with that, I'll introduce Deb Galardi, who's been your rate consultant for many, many years now, and she'll do a much better job of walking you through those three elements.
Welcome, Deb. Before I turn it over to you, I'd just like to make sure the audience that we do still have some, that, although this is not a public hearing, we welcome your testimony tonight. So after Deb goes through her presentation and Mike concludes, if you have any questions or comments regarding the wastewater financial plan review or the proposed rates or the methodology, feel free to, feel free to ask. That's, that was specifically for you, Mark.
Okay, as Mike well summarized, we'll cover the updates of the financial plan, talk a little bit about the equity portion and how that, how the revenue gets shared by different customers, the proposed changes to the rates and the rate structure, and then the next steps. I'll try to keep it brief, given you have a lot going on tonight. So the prior studies, just a little background, a lot of you have been through this process before. In 2011, we last did the equity update, looking at some modifications to the individual rate components. Two years ago, we updated the financial plan. That plan recommended continuing just above inflation, 2.8% average annual rate increases to continue to fund your operation and maintenance costs and ongoing capital improvements, but to continue to cash fund. The city is debt-free on the wastewater system, which to the envy of many of your neighboring communities, to spend down cash reserves in the near term to continue to cash fund and then to look to begin building those up again, because there's always things that needs to be replaced, components that need to be expanded, so we need to continue to plan for that in the future if you're going to continue to stay on top of, of the system and have these relatively low annual rate increases. Little bit of other context that, of happening, that information that informed our study was the current expansion, major expansion, the treatment plant of the secondary system offered some, some changes to the, the cost structure, because that's, that's very much related to providing additional wet weather flow capacity. And at the same time, staff at the plant were doing a trial with one of your major industrial customers in terms of their loadings and the, looking at the impacts of pretreatment or not that they were doing, and that also helped to inform the study as well. This chart, I just want to just show graphically the plan here in terms of the capital spending. The pink bars represent the annual cash needs for capital. The brown line that's descending over the period is the cash reserve balance, because, as I said, we're, particularly when we have that increase there in 1819 and a little bit in this current year, is pulling down those reserves. We're, we're basically buying down the rate increase by spending our reserves, but those reserves are there to fund capital improvements. So the, where we end up at the end of the plan is about $7 million, which is about what we projected two years ago. It's an excellent policy to continue to look at this every couple of years, because there are some changes in customer growth, water use, things like that, that do impact both the costs and the revenue side, so to make sure that you continue to be able to have small adjustments over time, good idea to continue to look at that. So pretty much the same picture that we presented to you two years ago. So as Mike said, this study included, was, was very comprehensive in that it didn't just look at is the 2.8% rate increase overall still our target? It also looked at how those costs are, are shared by different customer classes and how we charge individual customer classes. And as, while the policy framework is, and the methodology approach is still very much the same, we are recommending some, some moderate changes to the, the way you classify customers ultimately and how you charge customers in terms of the strength of their wastewater. So just to, just suggest, this is a very detailed process that has a lot of work of both consultant team and staff to look at how the wastewater system incurs costs and what it relates to specifically in terms of serving customers and whether there are certain costs that really serve a limited number of customers, like in the case of industrial pretreatment costs, there are some of those costs that really benefit only commercial and industrial customers. So those are allocated specifically to those customers and then other costs are allocated to customer classes in proportion to their discharge, basically. The final step being then the rate design, once we determine the cost responsibility for each class. When we look, when we talk about services provided by the wastewater system, customers discharge wastewater, then there's a flow component and there's a loading component. The flow component is what we refer to as the average flow, that's that portion of flow that's related to customer discharge. The loading component is measured in biochemical oxygen demand, BOD, and total suspended solids, basically how concentrated is the wastewater discharge with these various pollutants. And that obviously impacts the cost of treatment, but a big part of the costs, and this is true all across the region, given our climate and our, I guess, geology and various other factors, that red slice of the pie there related to wet weather flows. And wet weather flows present an interesting issue when it comes to determining how costs should be shared by different customers, because they're not direct, it's, it's not a problem that's, that's directly measurable by information we have on customers, because it's, it's really an indirect cost of providing service. It, wet weather flow, I'm gonna skip ahead to this slide here for a second. So in the industry, EPA and the Water Environment Federation, which is the industry, the wastewater industry professional organization that puts out standards about how we do wastewater rate setting, says that it's, it's fair and defensible to consider the customers, the number of customers, the sanitary flow of customers, land area, or some combination when considering how we allocate those wet weather flow costs. Most customers, most communities use some combination of customers and wastewater flow because we have that information in the billing system. So even though it's not a direct correlation to the wet weather flows, which is infiltration and inflow into the system, there is some correlation. For example, the number of customers, the more customers you have, the more pipes you have in the system, the more connections you have, it's those connection points that are particularly susceptible to infiltration and inflow. Dwelling units, the more dwelling unit, multifamily tends to have a larger land area, so there's potential for that infiltration piece. And then the flow has some impact, because in the conveyance system, we have to build pipes larger in order to carry the, the customer flows. And the more surface area the pipe, the more it's apt to potentially to crack and, and allow that inflow. So the policy framework of the city for many, many years, and this started with the citizens' advisory committees we had many, many years ago, when you first adopted your, your cost advisory committees we had many, many years ago when you first adopted your cost allocation methodology, is to weight that allocation of wet weather flow costs more on the customer side because it's a community-wide problem that's not related directly to a customer's discharge, but more related to the pipes in the system. And in the last update in 2011, we made that allocation based specifically on the proportion of pipes in the system that are related to collection versus conveyance, saying that those collection pipes would be allocated on a customer basis and the conveyance portion of the system, that 20% would be allocated based on flow. So as I said, that's been a longstanding policy framework, and this update didn't change that, just wanted to review that in detail because it is an important factor. And I'm going to go back to this. So the other allocations, basically you're dealing with estimates of customer flows and loads are the basis for the allocation for the other parameters. Customer service-related costs are allocated to, based on the number of customers, so everybody pays, you know, their share for issuing a bill. And then the pretreatment program costs are split. Some of the costs do benefit all users of the system and other costs go directly to commercial and industrial. So we go through a very comprehensive process to identify the costs of providing these services and then allocate the cost to the individual customer classes. So that process was used to establish the current rates, which are shown in this slide here, and you can see that there's a fixed charge of $17.73 per month, and then a volume rate that's different between residential and commercial. The higher commercial rate reflects the fact that on average, commercial customers have higher wastewater strength, so the BOD and TSS components are higher. And that's because right now, your commercial class is an aggregate of, you know, you've got restaurants in there, which are tend to be higher waste, you've got retail, you've got laundries, everything's in there. And so right now, it is an average of all of those uses. And as Mike said, right now, the basis for industrial customers is they're charged the commercial rate, and then they're charged additional strength charges for monitored discharge over and above domestic strength limits because you do have actual sample data available for those customers, and it's just a handful of customers currently. What we looked at in this process is if the city is going to expand, as many, many communities are, the trend really is to expand how we're charging extra strength rates to include other uses that wouldn't necessarily be monitored and sampled, things like restaurants, grocery stores, bakeries, things that have been shown in the industry-wide information on concentrations of discharge to have higher strength, that we need to go to a classification system that would allow the city ultimately, when the data is available, to place customers in a number of different categories based on the type of use and the average wastewater concentration. So you would have, you would still have domestic strength, which would be for like retail customers and office-type uses. And then you would have a number of higher strength categories ranging from medium to super high, potentially the super high being things like wineries, breweries, those sorts of things that do discharge a high strength wastewater to the system and then obviously cost more to treat. So in doing so, we have to identify ranges of wastewater concentration that customers would fall in, and it requires then to place individual customers within in these classes. And right now, there's not the data available within your general commercial base to do this, but implementing this structure would be the first step and then ultimately gathering that data and assessing higher charges to some of those commercial customers now who really aren't paying for their share of the extra treatment costs.
How would that data be collected? Would that be a voluntary report or an audit or exams of some sort?
In some cities, it's based on, you know, a business license, you know, that kind of system or just through the monitoring of the commercial customers by the wastewater program because they need to track what kind of users are coming into the system. There needs to be something in place to identify as a new customer comes in, what their category is, and then you would have a kind of a matrix that if you're this type of use, and the city of Dundee does this currently, so if you're a bakery, you fall into, you know, the very high strength and therefore your wastewater rate would be X. If you're an office, you fall into the domestic category and you're, but we need to be able to track what the specific use is.
Standards for these?
There are definitely standards in terms of how you place different business types in these categories. What you need is the local data that matches up your individual accounts with a business type because, you know, businesses can change and you have to have some, something in place to monitor that.
But is there enough studies that have shown that a bakery fits within a certain category?
Oh, sure, absolutely. And often, and you would also want to, in your ordinance, have an appeals process so that if someone believed that they really, that the national data wasn't representative of their use for whatever reason, then they could choose to sample and submit and then be reclassified. You can also use it to incentivize things like grease control and things that you can have, and Dundee does this as well, you can have a restaurant that cleans its grease traps and monitors all of that in a lower category than a restaurant that doesn't. So it can be, there's all sorts of ways that this kind of a structure can improve the equity and also enhance the operation of the system.
And I'm sorry, just to go back to Kevin's question, so you would take this on literally on a case-by-case basis then? A customer-by-customer basis?
It'd be our decision how we want to do it.
Yeah, well, initially, you would adopt a, within your ordinance or your resolution, how the classes, how different customers would be classified, but there would be a process that people could, generally, there's a process that's identified that if people want to incur the costs to do their sampling on their own, that they could potentially be reclassified if the sampling showed that they weren't in the correct class. Generally, that's not the case.
One of the examples that you used was wineries, which I happen to be pretty in tune with. So within the city, the wineries within the city were already required to collect our wastewater, neutralize it, and then settle out solids. So that's why I'm kind of asking not just about the winery side, but how you would look on, how it would be kind of, how you would evaluate on a, how is that, are you going to list every single type of business and then look at their current water use? Is that what you're proposing?
Generally, there's a limited number of business types that would fall in above domestic, and those could be listed for existing customers, you would, or typical customer types, if you didn't have, happened to, maybe you don't have any breweries now, but they would be listed, you know, in case a brewery came in. There for winery, for any type of customer, the onsite pretreatment absolutely could impact the discharge to make it be domestic or certainly something lower than what it otherwise would be without some sort of pretreatment. So that would be a factor, like dealing with fats, oils, and grease, some sort of pretreatment would definitely be a factor that would be considered in how that customer was classified. But we're talking about, I think, a fairly limited number of customers where these sort of other factors would play in. The majority of customers would be pretty straightforward in terms of their classification. Mike, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to jump ahead to next steps, and I know Deb will get here, get there, but this sort of proposed classification system that we're proposing with this update will be limited to our monitored industrial customers, of which there are five. But the development of this classification system then would allow us, if the council so wishes, to further de-aggregate our commercial and non-monitored industrial classes in the future. And so I think you'll hear later tonight, perhaps some public testimony, that there is an interest in continuing to get us to an equitable rate system where everybody's being charged their fair share of treatment, particularly amongst the difference between a residential and the commercial industrial. And then moving to a classification system such as this would allow us to more equitably charge across our commercial industrial classes. But we're not proposing to implement this change to all commercial industrial customers with this update. We're proposing to set the classification system in place to, and apply it to our monitored industrial customers, of which there are five, and then we'll look to the council's direction between now and our next update to create, to have a public process where we go out and meet with our customers, our wineries, our bakeries, our other commercial customers, and start to have the discussion on whether disaggregating our commercial industrial class makes sense in our wastewater structure. So I think I stole her thunder for next steps.
No, that was, that was.
She's laying the groundwork for why we're doing this. This is an important step, I think, for our monitored industrial customers. We've reviewed this classification system with all of those customers, all five of those customers, I believe, are in support of this classification system. And then it does allow flexibility for the city to roll it out to our other commercial industrial customers in the future, if the council so wishes.
Thank you, Mike, for that clarification. I think that's really important that this is laying the groundwork and only applying right now to the five monitored industrial customers who have been charged based on strength. This would just put them, slightly change the way that they're charged, and there's nothing that compels you at this point in time by adopting this and applying it to those customers to ultimately apply this to anybody else, but if you so choose, it's there. Okay, so just to finish up here in terms of what this looks like compared to the current rates. So in this chart, you've got the current rate structure with the 2.8% revenue increase that's proposed for the current fiscal year, applied to the rates, and then we are comparing that with the revised equity rates that reflect both the update to the cost of service analysis and also the change in the customer classification structure. So you still have a fixed and a volume charge. You can see under the revised equity rates that the fixed charge does increase some relative to just increasing the 2.8%. That's we're shifting some costs to the fixed charge, and that's reflective of some of the changes to the cost of service analysis, in particular, that in a slight increase in the wet weather flow-related costs. The volume rates, then you can see on the right-hand side, you see a number of different rates that range from $5.32 per 100 cubic feet, that's the CCF, up to $12.30 per CCF if you're a very high or a super high customer class. And while these rates look high relative to the current commercial average, they are not higher when compared to the rates that are paid by those industrial customers. Now, they're just structured differently because now you've got the volume rate plus this extra strength surcharge, that extra strength cost is rolled into that volume rate. So it gives a variety of charges that could be applied to different customers of different strength concentrations, and currently you would have customers that are in that monitored category that would fall in low, high, very high, and super high categories. But again, these are not, the unit rates are not higher than what they are charged The, anytime, the city has had a past practice of transitioning changes to the rates, whether it be from a cost of service or the rate equity review, or from a change to the customer classifications over multiple years in order to minimize the bill impacts on different customers. Here, we're seeing an increase in the fixed charge that would impact small, low-volume customers relatively more because more of their charge or more of their bill is comprised of that fixed charge. So we have put together a transition plan that would, over four years, phase in those increases to minimize the rate, the shift and the bill impacts in the near term compared to going to the rate, to the equity rates in a single year. So that's what this chart represents. You can see that instead of going to over $19 per month, that in the first phase, the fixed charge would go from $17.73 to $18.60, and the other rates are changed and increased in the volume rates in order to achieve the same amount of revenue. So this is a revenue-neutral scenario. It just phases in the equity over four years in order to minimize the rate impact. So you can see here for some sample customers that without, so this is based on the transition, the recommended transition for the initial increase. Instead of, if we weren't making any changes to the equity part, we, all customer bills would go up 2.8% because that's the additional revenue we need. But that's being redistributed as a result of these changes, both to the equity review, which showed a decrease in some of the strength-related costs, the BOD and TSS costs overall, an increase to the wet weather flow costs. And when you factor all of that in, you get some decrease in the revenue recovered from industrial customers and more of an increase than the system-wide average for everybody else. And so you can see with the transition, instead of some customers going up nearly 5% in 1516 with that first phase, that we keep those increases between 3% and 4% for a typical bill. And you can see what that means in terms of dollar differences for an average residential, the current bill being 5106, and that would go to 5285. As Mike said, the next steps, so this, this kind of a change would require some modification to your ordinance, so, which we don't, aren't bringing forward to you tonight, if the plan would be to bring that back on November 10th along with a rate resolution. Implementation of the new rates would be effective January 1 for the, those disaggregated classes applied only to the monitored industrial and potentially looking, based on council's direction, about the time of the next review to potentially expand that program to other commercial customers. That's all I had, if there are questions.
Okay, let's start with any questions for Deb, and then we can, and then we can turn to Mike, and then we'll bring him back. And then the council, Alan, you have any?
I don't, thank you.
Ready?
I do, thank you. I have some, let me organize my thoughts here just a moment. Is it all right to ask kind of?
Yep.
At the same time?
You got it.
Because I'm not exactly sure where the answer comes from. This one, I'm sorry, is just to review the wastewater, the wet weather flow, and you were saying that that was equally distributed, so is that equally distributed through all residents, all wet weather flow is?
So 80% of the costs are allocated to the different classes in proportion to the number of customers, and 20% based on the amount of flow. So basically, 80% of those costs do get, you know, every living unit, so a customer we're defining as a dwelling unit, in the case of residential, or an account for commercial, gets one unit's worth of those costs, and the 20% is recovered through the volume rates and in proportion to flow. So generally, what that means is residential customers are the highest percent of accounts in your system, but in your system, but don't represent that same amount of flow because you've got a lot of commercial industrial customers that have higher flow. So 80% being allocated on a customer basis does impact the residential customers more.
Okay. And then on page four here, in the rate transitioning, there's something that caught my eye earlier, and then kind of ties in with what was said, you, Mike, you said that there are five monitored industrial customers that we're talking about, and that all five of them are in support. And the end of that paragraph there on rate transitioning says, talks about the monthly bill for residential and commercial, commercial customers going up, and then goes on to say that for industrial customers, the rates will actually decrease. So if I read that correctly, I'm not surprised that all five would be in support if their monthly bills kind of go down. So I just kind of wanted to note that. And then the, the thing that I didn't see in here, which the, kind of the, this is what I'm going to make you guys do, but is that, you know, we've had this overarching theme this year of looking at affordable housing, and I feel like this doesn't, that that wasn't taken into consideration with this. And in fact, low-income families are disproportionately hurt by this with the wet weather flow. I mean, if you're looking at multifamily housing, then, you know, if each, each small apartment is taking on the same portion of that. Also, just the general rate increase as you went through fiscal year 2020, residential customers were going to be paying a, you know, a flat base rate that was going to top $20 a month without the volume. And, you know, quite frankly, we still have a tremendous number of people that, if you read the classifieds every week, that, I mean, we're hiring still at $9, $10 an hour. So if you've got somebody that has to enter their third hour of work in one day just to cover their flat rate versus, well, others, you know, then it seems to be, it's, it's clear that it's not included in this. And my concern is that it will, there will be a negative and disproportionate effect on low-income families, which one of our goals this year is to address affordable housing. And this is a key element as a monthly bill. So those are my questions, comments, right, at the moment.
Good questions, Remy, thanks a lot. Scott?
Not at this time, no.
Let's go down to Larry. Larry?
I appreciate what you've done. I have made sense.
Kelly?
I can understand Remy's point of view on this, but I also understand that we have some customers that are being charged at extremely high rates, such that it might even put them out of business. And so part of this decision-making is to assist them and let them stay in business because they're an essential employer within the town, and to also, you know, spread the pain, so to speak. No, I don't have anything beyond that, but I think it's something you need to consider because it affects a lot of people.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, Deb, I want to thank you for coming. I realize almost everyone in other meetings you've been to, you've had to wait through a long, a long, interesting meeting, so...
Yeah, why she shows up so early?
I'm beginning to wonder if she's the reason why we have so many interesting meetings. But yet they all leave before you get a chance to talk. I don't know. You know, I've sat through a couple of these now, and I honestly, this is, it's starting to make sense to me now. So thanks.
That's exciting.
For hanging in there with me. I, I'm, I'm excited to see that we are, we're moving in a place where we can get more sophisticated about the way we rate these businesses and these different, different entities. I think that's the only place we'll finally hit equity, when we can really determine the impact that these businesses or residents have on, on the system. And until that point, if we just broadly categorize people, there's going to be an equity there. And I, and I am excited for moving in that, in that place. And I realize there's going to be some challenges in gathering that data, but data is so important, and the fact that we don't have that right now is troubling. Thanks.
You know, just a couple things that I didn't hear. One thing I didn't hear bring up, and I don't know if we, you know, last, and I guess, Mike, this would be for you, the last two or three years or four years now, as we've been working and are more on our I and I program to ensure that most of the runoff, we send as little runoff through our plant as possible, but most of our runoff goes, do we have any idea of the success of our I and I program and what that potentially could do, the percentage less going through that, that could potentially do to our rate structure? If we're not sending that much through the plant?
Kind of two separate questions there. The, the whole foundation of the wastewater master plan was the removal of a certain percentage of I and I out of the system to limit the amount of expansion that we needed to do at the treatment plant. But the foundation of the plan is that we will continue to have I and I that we need to convey to the plant and treat at the plant. And Deb mentioned this treatment plant expansion that we're about done with. One of the primary drivers of that expansion was to handle wet weather flow. And so that's sort of the foundation of the plan. At the second, the second breath is that, yes, we are making an impact. I can't quantify that for you in numbers at this point, although I will note that our wastewater staff will be doing flow monitoring this winter so that we can compare flows now versus when you adopted the plan in 2010. So we'll, we'll be able to look at how much impact have we made in the last five years, and we look forward to sharing that with you late spring, early summer, as those results start to come in. But it will be important to remember, even though we're spending millions of dollars on I and I, the foundation of the plan is we will continue to have I and I, and we have to convey and treat that. And that is a huge piece of our...
And hopefully what it does is make them prove, it will allow us to downsize or not put as big of, big of improvements at our water reclamation.
There are other communities around us that have said we're going to build big, huge treatment plants that we only need to use a very few times during the year, and those costs have all been built into their rates. We've taken a more balanced approach where we're chasing some of that water in the, in the piping asset and, and not choosing to, to allow it to get to the plant and have to be treated.
Okay, then, you know, this is a question that I have, and maybe Deb, you can answer this, how other cities do it, or maybe Mike, you know, I understand the fear when Kevin says he's kind of starting to understand this. Because I mean, between this and the water, water rate surveys and electrical rate surveys and, believe me, I still don't understand him, Kevin, and I work on through them. But I think the one thing that, that concerns me a little bit, and it does with the water and it does with the electrical, same way as if I look at our base rates or our fixed rates going up over the four to five years, there's nothing, and I mean, our, our usage rate is also going up, but there seems to me not to be a lot or anything that promotes conservation of water, whether it be, if, if you're given a fixed rate, is X number of dollars, I believe there has to be some way, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, that the conservation of water, either through a fixed rate or through cubic feet, you can go from 600 to 100, well, there's a big, there's a big span there that we don't do a lot to encourage people to conserve the water, so we're not putting as much into water reclamation facility. Am I just missing it, or are we not, do those rates not affect a lot for conservation?
Well, I would argue that, I mean, there's certainly an incentive to, I'm just going to go back to the rates here. You are, you are charged for every unit you consume of water and then therefore is assumed to be discharged back into the system. So at fairly high rates per, per unit of water, and as you move up in the scale of discharge of these strength classes, they get even more punitive for discharge. So you don't, your fixed rate doesn't include any quantity that's embedded in that. You are given a conservation signal, basically, in that if you use less, you will, your bill will be less because you won't incur these additional volume rates. And this is a, the very, a very standard way to charge for wastewater service. We don't tend to charge, like in water, sometimes you have inclining blocks where if you go over a certain threshold, then your rate goes up. For wastewater, by and large, if it's, it's based on this uniform volume rate where you just pay in proportion to your discharge. Now, I will say that we have seen incredible reduction in water use per account, even in the winter. So part of why we continue to monitor the plan is to make sure that, and we've been factoring that in because it's a trend around the country as people install low-flow fixtures, even during the winter months, people are using on average less. So the conservation is happening, and I do believe that this rate structure, by virtue of the fact that it does not include a minimum charge, that you're charged for each unit of, of water you use, does encourage conservation.
Well, thanks, Deb. Believe me, I'm not really complaining too much because if I look through the 2018, 19 year, an increase of $3 for the, or from 508 to 562 for the usage, and then 1773 to 2073 for the fixed rate. I know cities now that their fixed rate is triple what we have. So it's not that I'm complaining, but it just, and I think you're, you're right, it's built in there. I just think as we go down, especially if we're going to start putting a model in place that allows us to do differentiate in the commercial, industrial, and the different modes, that we be keeping in mind in the back of our mind that we build those adequately, that in the future, it does allow us to do things of to control or minimize our residential rates. But that's just my opinion. But then the last thing I had to mention is a question that, or a comment that Remy had. I agree with Remy 100% what we're moving to. I'm just not so sure if this methodology is the place to put it. I think that's a city philosophy methodology, that we don't put in our base rate structure. We just say if we're going to allow credits for low income, and we define what low incomes are, then that becomes a credit that's applied to this.
So maybe a credit that would hit the fixed rate and then just do on volume or something?
That's right, but without having to build it right into the rate structure.
That would...
I would encourage that.
If we're, if we're seeking for equity, though, I'm not saying I disagree with that, but as we are getting more sophisticated, we have to acknowledge the fact that we're going to be subsidizing that. I mean, these are costs that must be paid.
These are costs that have to be paid. The thing is, if you lose a large employer, these large employers are probably hiring people that are low income. I mean, you want to bite yourself, you know?
And I, I'm not arguing about the transition or the revenue requirements and all, and I'd much rather move to an equity model. I'm just, I think after we've gone through it a couple times of developing what that equity model really is...
There's certainly, I mean, there's certainly legitimacy to, ask water and light, the people who gets their, their power turned off or people who can't pay their utilities, they're lower income, right?
Not necessarily. Most of the time, but not necessarily.
Most of the time, they are. So I think, I think there's some, there's some value there of finding a way to make that more affordable for those people, but I'm just, we can't forget the fact that by doing so, we are going to have to be subsidizing them. Someone's going to have to pay more to make that happen.
We currently, we, we have a, there's a surplus, right? I mean, we're not, right now, I mean, you said that we've, we have...
It's been down to 7 million.
Well, yeah, there's a lot.
Surplus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A, a capital reserve, yeah. You have a reserve, correct?
Which is, that's the reason why we were able to take cash for the expansion of our treatment plant. We didn't have to go back for a bond or a rate issue to pay for that.
And that was, and that was purposeful, was the intent is unlike what the state is seeing
now for bridges and roads, and they have to pay for it after the fact with no savings beforehand. A few years back, they set a financial plan that said you must be able to pay for it without going out for debt. So that is why you see a surplus, because before you can have a project of the scale that we do with our wastewater expansion, you have to have that much money upfront. So that's why you see a reserve there. And that's why she indicated it is being spent down as the wastewater treatment plant finishes. But then you'll see the reserve build back up because we will have to have that reserve at a certain level before we can go out for the next major wastewater initiative in five or 10 years.
I, and I, I appreciate that. I just, going off of what Kevin was saying with, that we're going to be subsidizing low-income families, I mean, the suggestion in a way is that we're subsidizing big, our, our large businesses. And so I just want to, you know, the, and Mike, you said that we're looking for an equitable rate system. So, you know, if that's the goal, is an equitable rate system, then you have to look at every, you know, both ends of the spectrum and everywhere in between.
And I think that's the first step of this. That's why we don't have those industrial commercials yet to know what that equity structure is.
And I don't, I don't contest the, the reclassification system at all.
I, I just want to clarify one thing, that this reduction for industrial is not a reflection of an objective to reduce the cost on large employers. It is, comes out of the equity review that shows a shift in the cost structure. This was following the same methodology. These are the equity rates that come out of this updated numbers. So I, I just, I just want to make sure that it's clear that this was not, there wasn't some policy behind this that says, let's bring down the, the cost for industrial. It comes out of the, the changes to, and, and what's being done at the plant.
Okay, thanks. And before we discuss this anymore around the council, I'd like to give anybody in the audience who would like to provide any testimony, testimony on this. So is there anybody? Mark, come on forward. Put it, put, put in your address. Tell us your address and your full name, please.
Does Mark stamp?
Yeah, don't you just carry a stamp around where you can stamp it all the time?
You should bring a stamp.
I think you should.
Set sign up or something.
Mark, we love giving you a bad time, you know that.
Oh, I'm used to it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I've really enjoyed the discussion here. It's actually going to save me some of the points that I was going to make. I was, was going to be talking about affordable housing and, and equity. But I'm, I'm going to come up with, when I, when I finally explain this, and you're going to have to bear with me because there's some numbers involved here, a fairly simple solution that I think can reduce the customer charge and, and help in that way, and, and make this what I think would be a little more equitable. First, I'd like to start by thanking Mike Bissett and our consultant, Ms. Gallardi, for, you know, providing the information. Mike gave me her spreadsheet. I've spent some time looking through it. To be honest with you, I don't understand it completely, but it's very sophisticated. I mean, I was looking, oh, wait a minute, the subtotals on table eight and table nine don't match up, and so I'm looking back.
We're in trouble now.
Yeah. But the, but I looked back through it, and, oh, she's running a 10-year running average to come up with the numbers, and that's how she's out. Okay, you know, I mean, so it's a really sophisticated spreadsheet. I don't have any problem with the model. I don't have any problem with her allocations, her new allocation system with commercial, industrial. I think, you know, we're headed in the right direction there. And, and I want to be clear that I support the, what Mike referred to in his memo as pay-as-you-go. I'm in favor of the 2.8% increase, okay? I'm not here to speak against the increase. I'm, I'm here to speak how that increase is allocated. And the two concerns I have about the rates are, have already been brought up. One is the, the, the difference between the, the amount of money going into the customer service charge versus the volume rate, which is what results in the numbers you see up there, where all of the, the, the small business and residential classes are getting a bigger increase than industrial, which is getting actually a decrease. And, you know, Mike can correct me, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I don't think we're in any danger, Kelly, of losing any businesses. I don't think their rates have gone up in the last 20 years. If we went back and looked at what the rates were then, I mean, they had a rate decrease at the time, we had the really big increase. And these studies have kept them, they've gone up and down a little. I mean, this is, you know, fairly another decrease, so I don't even think they've had a rate increase in 20 years. So, anyway, I'd like to quote from page one of the equity review in, in Ms. Gallardi's report, in which she says, "While the allocation methodologies are widely accepted for developing equitable rates, equitable allocations are to some degree a matter of judgment because many costs are associated with facilities or services that serve more than one purpose or more than one group of customers." So I, I think that's important. I mean, the word equity brings up the, the sense of fairness, you know, something that's, everybody's kind of being treated equal. And I think it's a really loaded word to say it's an equity study when there's a lot of assumptions in here. There's a lot of assumptions in here. If you look in the spreadsheet, there's an input page... If you look in the spreadsheet, there's an input page, and you can, you know, see they've, this is allocated this way, that's, I mean, trying to say that every one of those is fair to everybody, I think, you know, you would be very challenged to, to look me in the eye and say that every one of those assumptions was correct. You know, and, and the one I want to talk about is, is the one that fortunately she had up there for, for your display, wet weather. I mean, I, I, you know, it's difficult in my mind to say how that should be allocated. I mean, you know, what's equity? I mean, you think about, you know, somebody in the West Hills that's far away, that's using a lot of pipe, coming down to the Irvine Street Pump Station, getting pumped over to the plant. I mean, they've got a lot of pipe and all that. Compare them to somebody else that's, you know, in an older area with older pipe, that's real close and just using gravity. I mean, how do you, how do you say what is fair to, to one neighborhood or one neighbor even than to another? I mean, I, this to me is just an entire minefield of trying to say what's fair, because, you know, different, we're in different regions of the city, we have different kinds of pipes that our sewage is going to, we cannot get it down to the individual to their actual costs. So, we're, so we're making some broad, big assumptions, and I think that's only reasonable. I'm not suggesting that we try to micromanage this, but, you know, I just want you to be aware that when we're saying what's fair, you know, what's fair to me might not be fair to Larry or to Kevin. I mean, you know, it's just, it's a matter of judgment. So, if you look on page 10 of the report, there's some allocations to customer classes, and in particular, the wet weather flow costs, which we talked about already, 80% based on customers and 20% based on average flows. Well, I mean, I find it interesting that something that's a flow isn't just 100% allocated to flow. I mean, if you just think about it in a strictly logical sense. Now, I understand that that's not the case, and I exchanged some emails with Mr. Bissett today about, you know, how are we doing it, and, you know, questions about the footnote there, which explains that it's split between collection and conveyance. Approximately 80% of the system piping is related to collecting flow from customers, and thus therefore is a function of customers, while 20% is for conveyance, which may be attributable to sewage flows. So, then I, I thought about this for a little bit, and I thought, well, okay. I asked him what it was, and it's basically the small pipes versus the large pipes. And I said, well, you know, wouldn't the large pipes be more likely to leak because there's more to them? And he said, well, it's just at the joints. Well, then how many, I mean, you know, you get into, you know, trying to track this down and figure it out, it seems to me like, you know, a bigger pipe is going to have more of a joint to, to, to have a leak in than a smaller one. But, you know, so I'm, I was more inclined to look at land area. And I contacted Ron Pomeroy at the city planning to say, okay, how much land do we have zone residential, and how much land do we have zone commercial industrial? And he gave me a number, and I can't remember what it came with, something like, no, I don't even quote it, but in, in communication with Mr. Bissett, then he suggested I look, because that, those, the planning department numbers include the parks and some lands that really aren't appropriate for, you know, tracking this. And so, he suggested using the sanitary sewer master plan allocation, looking at the numbers there. And table three, 3.6 of that plan gives 1,454 acres for commercial industrial and 3,358 acres for residential. So, that's basically 30% of the land area in McMenville is in commercial industrial use, and 70% is in residential use. Now, why am I bringing this number up? Because to my way of thinking, we're talking about rainfall. I mean, that's what I and I is essentially. It rains, and where does that water go? Well, we wish it went into, you know, the storm sewer and went into the creek and the river, but the reality is, some of it gets into our sewer pipes and winds up going over to the sewer treatment plant to be treated. And how, how much water on average is likely to go into a pipe? To me, it seems like land area is the most basic and simple way of allocating that, that fall, rainfall. I mean, if 30% of the land is in industrial use, then presumably, I mean, the rain obviously can rain a little harder in one neighborhood than another, but on average, it's going to rain the same everywhere in the city. So, the same amount of water is going to fall on every bit of, bit of acreage in the city. So, I would think that allocating on a 70%, 30% instead of the 80%, 20% allocation that's in there is, is reasonable. And it's not a really difficult thing to do. I mean, I'm not asking for a brand-new study or anything else. If you go to the first page in the spreadsheet, there's a, there's a tab called inputs, and right at the bottom is a nice number that all you have to do is change it from 80 to 70, and it flows right through the entire spreadsheet, and the customer service charge comes up to $16.80. So, that basically actually reduces it from the number that it's at now, which is, let me see what the number is I got it here. We're at 1773. And I think that that is actually a fairer and more reasonable way to allocate the costs anyway than trying to judge it on how many miles of pipe we've got. I think it's, it's talking about the literal thing that's causing it, the wet weather, it's the rain, it's, it's the amount of, of land area whether it's going in there. I think it's a much more justifiable way to allocate that, and it gets us to the same place that we're talking about without subsidizing or whatever. And I, you know, I'm all in favor of keeping the customer service charge, and I've argued this, you know, here and in front of the Water and Light Commission, that, you know, a lower customer service charge and a higher per-unit usage charge encourages conservation. I agree with Mayor. And, you know, this, this simple change, which I think is, is as justifiable as the 80/20 ratio that's in the report, is, you know, would be a way to get us to, to a way of reducing the customer service charge, encourage conservation, and balance out this number that we're seeing on the right here. Now, I want to be clear that this is going to have differing impacts depending on how much your volume charge is, because the impact, the customer service charge goes down, but the volume rate increases. What I pulled out of the spreadsheet, the 522 rate would go to 551, the 648 rate to 674. In other words, the, so there's going to be an increase in the volume rate. We're going to wind up with the same amount of money. I want to emphasize that. The spreadsheet is designed so how, how the rates are allocated, you're, you're going to wind up with the same number. It's just a question of, are you going to get it through the customer service charge, or are you going to get it through a increase in the volume rate? And I think I will let it go at that. Any questions?
Any questions for Mark, if anything? He said Alan.
Uh, no, just thank you for being an advocate for residential users like me and nine or 10,000 that are in the community, right? So, thank you.
Remy.
Oh, thank you. I thought it was an interesting idea. I'd love to hear the expert's opinion of.
Counselor Hill?
The same, you know, have the, have Mike or Deb talk a little bit about that. I mean, I don't think it was just floated tonight for the first time. Mark, you've been, you shared that with the Water and Light, and your premise is understandable.
Okay, Kevin.
Thanks, Mark.
Kelly.
Thank you, Mark.
Larry.
Thank you.
Once again, very good job, Mark. Sorry I had to make you, I'm not sure I had to make you wait so long. Okay, who else would like to speak to the council on anything on this? Okay, hearing none, hearing none then. I guess what we can do is, Mike, the only issue I heard tonight was the, really was the 70, other than, I think the council agrees with the rate equity plan and dividing the commercial up. The only thing I heard was, anything was the, what, Mark brought between the 80/20 and 70/30? Do you have any comments on that, Mike?
Well, I'll, I'll take an initial cut at the answer and defer to Deb to add to my statement, but the only reflection I would make on, on, on the distinction of just using land area alone is there's a higher number of connections in a residential acre than there are in a commercial industrial acre. So, if you can imagine a 10-acre parcel developed as, as a, a single-family residential that might have anywhere from 20 up to 35 single-family homes and, and lateral pipe connections to those homes, and then take the same 10-acre commercial property that's predominantly a large building or two with one, one or two connections and a lot of parking, there's a major difference in the amount of piping for those two types of land uses. And so, the, historically, we've taken a look at where our piping in our system is, and we've drawn a distinction between sizes 10 inches and lower, which serve all of our properties, and large, and parts that are larger than that, 12 inches or larger, and those serve the volume. That's the distinction between collections and, and conveyance. And we've used that pipe size allocation to determine the 80/20 split. And that's a historical split that you've used, I believe, since the master plans from the 1990s that started us on this journey. So, while I understand, and Mark and I have traded several emails, I understand the concept of just using the residential acreage versus commercial industrial acreage. There is a difference in the piping, the, the density to those types of land uses. And I'll, I'll defer to Deb to add to that, so.
Okay, may that answer the question? I think so. Mike, that being said then, do you have now, if, if we decide to tweak that number, I think we can tweak it in the final ordinance, but Deb, I guess my question is, based on everything you heard tonight, and I think the council's on, on board with the rate methodology and what we did, do you feel pretty comfortable of, in two weeks or four weeks, bringing back a, bringing back a ordinance, setting the rate, rate structure as we discussed tonight? Because I really didn't hear any big issues that would keep us from setting that rate structure.
I think the only thing we didn't touch on, and I'll defer to Martha to add to this, is Remy's and a couple others' concerns about whether or not something can be done with the utility bill for affordable housing. And I think as we move forward with the affordable housing issue, and we talk about system development charges, we can also talk about utility rates, and there are other structures in place that allow for discounts or reductions for low income, and, and those can be added, I think, at that time when we have the discussion of affordable housing in the larger context.
And, you know, actually, I, you know, I would advocate for a holistic look, because we could try to go, I don't know which is the right way to encourage the right amount of savings, what affordability class we're going to do. There are so many questions to answer on what this community wants to do for affordable housing. As such, to bring it into this conversation, I think is probably not the right place for it. I think we could do better justice if we looked at it in the holistic look on what we're planning coming up, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. The reason I bring it up repeatedly is because, you know, in this format, you know, we have Ms. Gallardi here, who's an expert on the subject. We have the research that's being done. We have these tables and flow charts in front of us where we can see not only the short-term and the long-term. And so, I continue to bring it up as, as we talk about these different things, because I, I understand the approach of wanting to set it aside and address it as a whole later, but I also see the opportunity, or perhaps a missed opportunity, to incorporate it in these conversations, and while this is being addressed, and present options to the council at the time, you know, making it, making it a part of the, of the approach. Here's our approach for adjusting our sewer rates, and incorporated is an approach, you know, here's this, this small part that does address affordable housing, and, and that's why I repeatedly bring it up. I, I understand that ultimately, we're going to be saving it for this kind of, you know, looking at affordable housing separately, but I think it has a place in each conversation. And if we don't talk about those things now, when we have all of this expert advice here and available, and all of this information readily available to us, then we have to go back and collect again, and then look at, well, how would the city be affected by offering affordable, or, or offering to the lowest-income earners, you know, how would that affect the revenue? Where could we make up for it in other areas so that we're not hurting our services, so that we're not subsidizing? And maybe that the approach would not be that the city itself would be subsidizing these low-income families, but can people that, whose median household income is above, whatever, $70,000 a year, can they afford to pay a few dollars more per year that would offset a few dollars that are really going to affect a very low-income family?
I think, you know, one thing that, and I'm glad you do bring it up, Remy, I think, and this is the exact correct place to bring it up. I do think as we look at, we may think February's a long time off, but it's not a long time off, that as we look at our goals and objectives next year, you know, this year was more with the homeless to become educated, do those kind of things. I would strongly suggest that if the rest of the council feels the way you do, which I know I do, and we also, that that become one of our short-term goals next year, is to take all these, this information we've got, and then really set in place what we need to do to make it. Let's, let's not talk about it anymore, and let's make it happen. Because I agree, we've had a lot of experts in that give us a lot of good information. And I think with that and our educational process, now we need to look at what we need to do to make it hap, make it happen.
I understand, but a secondary rate increase would be a challenge to do, right?
No, we look at our rates every year, and this is, just like we do anything else. We'll get smart, and then we change. That's, that's the value that I have come to learn about this whole council, is that you change.
And you, one of the nice things about it is, we just give basically City Water and Light a new number, because we don't do any billing for our sewer or anything anyway. Just they pump it through their billing system, and that's, so once we set a new rate, if we set a new one, then it just all runs through their billing system, and it's all taken into consideration. But good, good, very good comments, Remy. Anything down at this end of the table? So, Mike, I think you have enough direction to bring us back a ordinance. And that would be for, if we, if we're going to have Martha, if we're going to have a work session on the 10th, and you said we had several other items of business on the 10th scheduled right now.
We do, but let me check to see, like I said, it'll be a time, place, manner work session.
My concern is that will take a couple hours.
I don't know, I don't know how much of time it will take. And the sessions for, I can work with Mike on, on when he needs the right time to put those, for the contracts, for the transportation bond, so we can, we work on the timing on that. You know, we will bring you a calendar date that I think the work session takes priority.
Okay.
And we will make sure that, you know, we will schedule something that tries not to take us to midnight. How about that?
That sounds good to me. Michael, thank you. Deb, thanks for seeing us. Some night we'll get you down here when you can actually, maybe we can get you first on, we're pretty close to first on the agenda. It was nice seeing you again. Okay, that takes us now under our ordinance. We did have one ordinance tonight, but that, I understand that that ordinance, the non-essential telecommunication franchise to Coastcom is being pulled, because Coastcom wasn't, had not had a chance to regroup, to review our franchise agreement. So, am I correct, Martha, we're pulling that off the agenda tonight?
We are pulling that off the agenda.
Okay, so we'll not be addressing ordinance number 4995 tonight. Takes us into resolution. We have a, discussed a little bit at dinner, we have a resolution 2015-49, and that's awarding the contract for the design of the Ford Street sidewalk improvement and pedestrian safety improvements, transportation bond measure projects. And I believe that was two projects, wasn't it, Mike? That was in your packet, and so are there any questions of staff of either one of those projects? If not, I will entertain a motion that we approve resolution number 2015-49.
Don't move.
A move by Counselor Menke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that 2015-49 passed the council unanimously. Mike, good work on those planning projects. Now we'll see what it does to Ford Street, and should be good, okay? Resolution 2015-50, and that's approving entering into a contract Marina and Company LLP. And Marsha, I'll turn that one over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. After 10-plus years of working with TKW and Rob Moody, who you all know quite well, with them providing audit services for us, we decided it would be a good idea to do an RFP. That's a standard practice and a best practice to do that for several reasons. So, we did go through that process, and Counselor Hill and Counselor Menke, and also Mark Carlton, who is the finance director at Water and Light, met with our two proposers, and one was TKW. was TKW. And we knew that they would provide some excellent services for us, but the decision was made to go with Marina and Company. A large part of that decision, we've been very happy with TKW, but a large part of that decision was just the, the best practice that it is, a good idea to rotate auditors, especially since we've been with TKW for 10-plus years. So I guess I would ask Counselor Hill or Counselor Menke if you had anything to add to that.
Bummin, Kelly.
We were very impressed with Marina. Their staff was quite impressive, particularly when their lead person was just exemplary. She kind of reminded me of Rob Moody when I met him 10-plus years ago.
Did he have hair back then?
Not a lot. No, I think it's a good move. I think they'll provide excellent service for us, and I totally agree that it's time to change.
Okay.
I think another thing that we really looked at is Marina seemed to be more, more on top of some of the issues that we're going to be changing as compared to TKW. I mean, they're going to be there, but they weren't as prepared, and they didn't, they didn't wow us like Marina did. The other piece is that from a cost standpoint, we know that when you're being, you're looking at a bid that, you know, new companies may lose a little money to get your business, but we got, we had a more favorable pricing structure from Marina than we did with TKW, which would have just continued. We thought that they'd maybe been a little more competitive, just to be continuing. TKW also, we were, we were looking at losing Rob, who's gone to another part of the practice. We were looking at the whole group that was going to be coming in was going to be different. So it was going to be a major change anyhow. And then falling back to this piece that it was prudent for us to have another set of eyes looking at us, we felt timing was perfect.
Yeah, we felt the staffing consistency was a major piece in choosing Marina.
Okay, that being said, council, we, we'd like approval of resolution number 2015-50, and that'd be based on Marcia's input and also the input of our audit committee consisting of Counselor Menke and Counselor Hill. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So a move by Council President Jeffries. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Menke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that resolution number 2015-50, approving entering into contract Marina and Company LLP has been approved unanimously. Okay, council, that takes us to our next item. We will skip the reports from councilors, committee, and board assignments, but like to spend a minute and just go around and say.
Mayor, did we do the franchise agreement?
We, you were, we took that off the agenda.
Okay.
They weren't read, they hadn't read our franchise agreement, so they asked to have it.
Okay.
They asked to have it pulled.
Thank you.
So, okay, Matt, anything going on in the PD? Okay, thank you, Marcia.
The only thing I would point out is that one of the information items on the agenda is the Housing Authority of Yamhill County, HAYC, their audited financial statements. I did actually read through those audited financial statements. They did get a clean opinion. We were especially pleased with that because, as you know, we are working with the Housing Authority on our CDBG grant of $400,000. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. Good, good job, Mark. Doug?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Michael?
Just a scheduling note. We are planning for your November 10 meeting to have an update of the Alpine Avenue, Fifth Street corridor projects from HDR Consulting, and just looking to get the council's fingerprints on those projects so that we can keep moving forward for construction next summer.
Okay, thank you. Nothing. Is anything happening in IT? You're not getting off that easy. You're sitting up in the front row. No, I was coming back to you for last.
We're information gathering, because we put up a comprehensive plan for you all. We've got a website we're looking at now, and you're going to hear a lot about that.
Gee, that was a nice concise report. I'm impressed. Okay, do we have anything more to come in front of the council? Counselors?
Yeah, I just want to thank this body for indulging me in my rants about medical marijuana use, and I think this is what makes this council so unique, that we can have these lively debates and still hug each other at the end. In some cities, that's not, that's not always done. And I also, I want to apologize to Chief Scales for kind of pulling you into my rant, and I should have talked about it first, but as, you know, we can set up all these regulations and stuff, but it's really his folks who are going to be boots on the ground making all these things happen, and I, you know, I want to hear what you have to say about these things, and I hope you don't hesitate. But again, I'm sorry that I pulled you in like that. That wasn't cool, so, sorry.
Kevin, I just want you to know, yours or anybody else's, we never consider them rants. We consider them constructive input and opportunities for us all to learn, so.
Thanks.
Nothing else said? Meeting adjourned.